I call this work session to order and any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I have one item to add, discussion on H R A board.
Okay. All right, any further? Have motion to approve?
Also move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. The first item on the agenda is 1.1, elected officials. Post-employment.
It'll come up. This is a conversation that we've been having at the Personnel Committee for quite some time and it dates back to this resolution from 2018 that reestablished or refined the post-employment retirement benefit that elected officials in Hubbard County had and have to this point. And the discussion at the Personnel Committee was to terminate the post-employment benefit because it's not consistent with the rest of the benefits that we have throughout the county. The rest of the county employees have health benefits while they're working but not any benefit past that point in time. So that is the goal and intent of this policy. The conversation takes into effect a couple of other things. The first item would be to limit, to sunset this policy and limit it to the current accruals that we have and the current elected officials and not add any new elected officials under this policy. It would be to review the Commissioner compensation relative to the value of that and how that had weighed in and affected the entire package of what compensation for Commissioners in Hubbard County is. And it would be to identify if we do in fact sunset and don't add any new members, when do we discontinue the accrual? Does the accrual stop when the policy is approved? Does it stop at the end of the term for the current elected officials? Does it stop at the end of the continuous service of the current elected officials? So that's really the, it all came up primarily when there were questions about how to use this. How to use this has gotten really super complicated, right? So we're working on the policy on how to use that. It's basically a post-employment H R A is what it's going to be calculated into and it's going to have a maximum amount. But whatever the monthly amount is that elected official would use post-employment is what they would use. They wouldn't get to use the entire amount, they would get to use what they would get to use. So the current policy states you earn one year's worth of health benefit for every four years served. It's very likely that your health benefit that you would need after retirement would be less than what the current plans are if you're doing a Medicare supplement or doing something else like that. So it probably doesn't have the value that it does currently. So the application of that and the tax implications of that is the reason that we're bringing this forward. So I guess that's what we look for is conversation on sunsetting the policy, when to do that. Personnel Committee would recommend bringing it to this group, having that conversation and then potentially putting this on the agenda for next week to make a determination on the policy. But the primary conversation today would be relative to when do accruals stop? So we can write that into the policy. And then a conversation sometime between now and when we set the preliminary levy would be, is this have any impact on what Commissioner pay ought to be relative to the surrounding counties and the benefits that they have? Nobody else has this benefit anymore at this point because it's just got, it's gotten too problematic and it doesn't seem, I'm guessing people just thought that benefits exist while you're an employee. So I guess I would leave it to there for conversation.
Are there very many who would use it? Just about everyone who leaves is eligible for Medicare.
I don't think there's any, I believe there's one person who is actively drawing on this now, everybody else is done. Basically the accrual balance we have is for the current elected officials.
However, it would pay for the supplemental insurance. Because you could take those dollars.
If there's a Commissioner who's young enough who needs coverage for a little while, they still can get co-working there.
Yeah. We've discussed this individually with Corey and Jonathan and this is not an issue for either one of them.
I think that, I don't think there was a, there wasn't any disagreements in a sense in the committee. I know I was leaning towards end of service, so basically if this is my last term, but if I did win reelection, I have a third term and that would make me, give me three years after I'm done. But who knows, we all may be out next election and it's done.
I'm neutral to it because I'm on Medicare and I don't get health insurance from the county, so it doesn't matter to me.
But that doesn't apply. If Tom is, would he have to take health insurance through us to get this benefit?
So the policy states that your accrual is based on your current, the current health plan that you have with the county.
Okay.
So yes, if you're not using, if you're not active with the health plan with the county, your accrual would be 25% of zero.
Yep. Which is zero.
Or 100% of zero.
That depends on who's multiplying.
Oh yeah, yeah.
So yes, that's, the maximum is, the accrual is set at the maximum of whatever the official is enrolled in at a certain point in time. I think it's January 1 of the previous year.
It's kind of a balancing act because I mean there's, most of my first term, I didn't need health insurance, I had coverage, so you know, that benefit meant nothing to me. Now that I'm on it, it's, yeah, you could see where you could use it to bridge the gap to Medicare. And then the issue is I have no problem eliminating it, that's not the problem, but if it's a benefit that you have or earned, how do you, how do you translate that into, do you put that into regular Commissioner pay? If you do that, you're kind of apples and oranges because you're talking pre-tax money versus taxable money now. So it's a little bit different, but it's not that important to me, I guess, that I could, I can see where it gets to be a nuisance to deal with. And that's probably why most have eliminated it. And between having Aviva and those types of things, you know, God forbid, as long as you don't get seriously sick, you should have the wherewithal, if you properly manage your Viva, to be able to cover insurance for a period of time anyhow.
So this benefit basically covers us Commissioners and the county attorney and the county sheriff. Like you were saying, it's not a lot of people, not a big pool.
Just doing quick math, because I think it's about an $800 a year benefit on a single policy.
$800 a month.
Yeah, or a month. So you're looking at $9,600 a year. So over a term, you'd have to get compensated $9,600 in salary, just dollar for dollar, but that's again, one's tax, pre-tax and one's not. So you would be looking at roughly $2,400 to $3,200 a year if you're going to compensate that with salary, that you'd have to increase salary to compensate. And that's assuming, that's in today's dollars, premiums are probably going to rise.
And as Commissioner Delhun talks about that, if you were to compensate salaries, you'd probably only do that after you terminate the accrual, right? So if we continue the accrual, you really wouldn't be doing both or you'd be paying, paying both. So if you sunset the policy, terminate the accrual effective now or effective the end of the year and change the pay structure beginning January 1, that would make sense, but you really wouldn't continue the accrual to the end of a term or beyond the point where you change the pay. I would, I would think it would make sense. You'd do, if you sub them, you would do them at the same time.
So because I'm in my third year of my second term, if we terminated it after December, then the benefit would be three-fourths of one year?
That's the way it's currently written, that it is, it is prorated based on service. So essentially instead of one year per four, you're earning 25% annually.
And I'm not one, I always hate, always hate it when, there's rational reasons for grandfathering, but I've never liked the fact that, okay, we keep our benefits and new board member comes on, they have no benefit. I mean, it's kind of like when T R A, the Rule of 90 disappearing, you still have people that qualify for Rule of 90 and all these new people now have to work five or 10 more years before they qualify for retirement. I just never liked that. So I'd be more inclined if we, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, if we're going to do it, do it to all of us. Instead of having some of us around with the benefit and then the new members come on and they don't have that benefit, I don't, I'm not real keen on that.
I can go either way.
Yeah.
I can too. I think part of what, what, I'm going to put this out, it bothers me, but those of us that would be eligible for Medicare, if there was, even currently, there's no way of the county, it seems like there's no way for the county to pay for our Medicare, but yet that would be saving the county. If that was possible versus going on the current policy.
Yeah, I would agree with you because a supplemental to Medicare would be probably half price or even less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe if they were paying for Part B and a supplement, it's probably still a lot less than what they're currently paying.
So when we were on prime health insurance, we had that option?
Because they had a group.
Because they had a group.
And we're researching options for that. I believe the last conversation Gina had with Darcy, who's our attorney, benefits attorney that helps us on this, is that we would probably administer that ourselves rather than having a group because we're, we don't have enough participants for a group. I think you need 10 to have a group. So that, that, that's in the works, that's possible. It just has to, that has to be gone through and it's, and it's kind of independent of this. So in summary in conversation, I'm hearing that if we brought this next week, we could sunset the policy and then stop accruals at the end of this year in consideration of review of what Commissioner compensation would be starting 2024?
Of course you would have more flexibility if you took it in Commissioner compensation and then just contributed more to an H S A. You could accomplish the same thing in the end.
But you can't be.
You have to be the responsible party for doing it is all.
But you can't participate in an H S A if you're on Medicare.
Right, but in the meantime, while you're a Commissioner, you could be building an H S A.
You can contribute to Viva.
That could help me for those, that supplemental plan. You'd have more flexibility under the current benefit of the county, you got to take the county's insurance or you get nothing.
In the county's insurance, we're looking to see if we can build in an option to self-administer, paying those supplemental premiums in lieu of the regular health benefit, like we had the option before. So that would, if that is able to be worked out, that would apply as long as you were an employee at the county or actively, you know, elected. This conversation is about that post-employment benefit and the accrual thereof.
So yeah, taking that, taking it as Commissioner compensation and doing your own H S A or contributing more to your Viva or whatever, would leave you more flexibility in the end. Like you just, you have to do the planning yourself.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
It seems to make the most, the most sense to have a hard line and then have that compensation flipped to the other side. I mean, if there's going to be, if that's a compensable item and we want to review that on the other side, you obviously couldn't pay more and still accrue benefits, you'd have to have a, you'd have to draw the line somewhere. And the most reasonable place to draw the line is at the end of a year, just for accounting and bookkeeping and all those things.
So for those of us, well, David and I then would be a year and a half.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that would be prorated for Sheriff and the Attorney as well.
It's the cleanest way to do anything and then everybody's the same, everybody's treated the same.
And originally when this was brought up back in 2014, it was meant to sunset, but there was a misunderstanding and then it got reinstated.
2018 was meant to sunset the policy, the conversation and then this resolution ended up kind of going sideways from that conversation as I understand. As they do sometimes. I will draft it like that, you'll have an opportunity to think about it, review it, discuss it again next week before actually, when it comes up as an actual agenda item.
Just the rough math, if it's a $2,400 a year benefit and you're 25% tax bracket, that would have to equate to compensation of $3,200 a year to be equal to what the benefit was.
I'll also ask Gina to provide an update on the current elected healthcare options as they are and as they're developing. And the ability to use these accrued benef, how to spend these accrued funds post-retirement because the stuff that's out there is out there. It's a liability against the county and a benefit for the continuing. Try to answer some of those questions.
It's my own fault.
Okay? Good on that one?
Yeah. I guess after that one, we slip in the H R A discussion?
So I sent you all an email last week relative to concerns expressed about the current management operation of the Hubbard County H R A. I think we know that the employees of the H R A were terminated for falsification of time cards and for paying other people off the books to work in those projects. There are concerns about, that have come up through the audit that have been reiterated about cash handling and receipting of rents and deposits being made. And there are concerns about the maintenance and condition of the facilities relative to complaints, relative to additional repairs above and beyond what is, would be expected in the regular turn of those spaces. I've also heard from our Sheriff and our Social Services Director that they'd be happy to address the board and speak about concerns related to those facilities that are, that they see on a regular basis. So that's kind of the status of the H R A projects, approximately 87 units, isn't eight or 10 buildings? And then the other challenge is that H L D C was contracted to provide management services for H R A and that contract is canceled effective June 30th. And there is, so there's nothing lined up for July 1st on how to manage, for property management, for staffing, for leadership of the H R A. The documents of the H R A, I'll point to an Executive Director and they had a contract with H L D, they previously had a contract with H R D C and currently they have a contract with H L D C to provide those services. The challenge is having a contract instead of an actual Executive Director created the situation where we didn't have direct oversight of the staff. Is it the Board's responsibility? Is it the Contract Service's responsibility? That's where the challenge was. If that Contract Service and the Board are working well together, maybe it's less of an issue. The Contract Service and the Board are not working well together and it contributed and exacerbated the situation. I have received, trying to help out and get the R F P out for management services for the H R A, I received direction from the Board Chair to post the R F P and I was contacted by a member of the H R A that said that there was no vote, there was no authorization and I was, it was demanded that I take it down off the website. Getting to the point that the H, getting to the point of saying the H R A Board is not right now capable of managing those projects or working together to find a solution to be able to have the capacity to manage those projects. So with that amount of background, my questions would be, does this Board have confidence in the H R A Board to resolve these problems? What would that look like? How much would it cost? And is this Board willing to increase the levy to support H R A operations to implement a solution? Those are the, those are the hard decisions that are in front of, in front of you and in front of us in a very near term because it's the middle of June and there is no July 1st solution.
What's the expected compensation for the Executive Director of H R A?
The current.
You're paying $40,000 to H L D C.
The current, the current contract is $40,000 a year for H L D C and to provide, I don't know, would it, does it take a halftime position? Does it take, would you find somebody for halftime for 10 hours a week? I'm not sure, but if you were looking at an Executive Director position, you'd be looking at $125,000 a year plus benefits for full-time. So if it's halftime, it'd be.
What was the whole contract with H R D C?
Five hours a week.
How much?
For the Executive Director, it was five hours a week.
That did not include property management.
Right.
That just included the clerk services for the Board is what that included. Which primarily again meant that the Property Director was not being directly supervised.
Last week at the H R D C Executive Board meeting, we voted to continue with negotiations with the Hubbard County H R A. I got a phone call and an update yesterday. Of course, the H R A is concerned with meeting the end of the month deadline. Our Board Chair at the H R D C felt confident that this could be accomplished. We've already been lining up management services and stuff like that to be able to take over on July 1st.
H R D C has or the H R A Board?
H R D C has.
Did you talk about what they would charge?
They looked at the current contract and I've got a current contract with the H L D, H L D C. They felt that it was going to be more than that, but they didn't know how much more. They also talked about, the first paragraph of the H L D C contract says that they would be responsible for staff supervision. And it doesn't appear that it really was, you know, as we're finding out much staff supervision. So there's, there's that, there's the cleaning crew that, there'd be the cleaning crew, the maintenance person and personnel collects rents.
The property manager?
The property manager. Like I said, they've talked about different options with the property management. I think it all comes down to H R A, you know, knowing what it's going to finally cost. I know that yesterday's meeting, I was told that the H R A would like to try to have this all accomplished in a week. I don't know if that's possible, but their Board Chair felt that 18 days would be the time to get it done. I can't give guarantees or anything. I've made this expression before, how I'm kind of on the outside looking in because I'm not, I'm not part of the H R A Board, but I am on the Executive Board of the H R D C and I know the capabilities that we have and I know that, part of the update of yesterday's meeting, I was told about things that the H R D C expressed to the H R A that we would like to do. One, one thing I could just mention is the Meadows. They talked about, the H R D C negotiators talked about a playground for the kids. Of course, the H R A talked about not, perhaps not having funds to do something like that, but the H R D C said that there are grants available out there to comply for those and perhaps have all playground equipment paid for with the grant. Of course, some of the H R A representatives are wondering why that hasn't been done before. Some of the members of the H R D C did an outside walk-around of the Meadows and of the Regency. And there is some concerns there. I myself and Chairman Kruger and I went last week and did the same thing. I don't know if I want to express what those concerns are, but there's going to have to be some dollars put towards the Regency, definitely the garage and understanding. be some dollars put towards the regency, definitely the garage and understand partner too. The meadows that are only a few years old, there's some issues there too that are concerning. But how do we get to that path, you know? I think that we can, I don't know if I want to say turn this thing around because I don't think that's really the proper terminology maybe, but I don't want to see the HRA go away.
All those points are great Ted, but I think, you know, at some point, we're definitely going to have to find either an executive director or somebody to manage because that's that's got to be done. But it's almost like putting the cart before the horse. We have to understand why we got in this position in the first place and we have to fix that problem. If we don't fix that problem, it's just going to happen again. And the reason we're in this problem, when you read the HRA board chair's letter and spells out the issues, is we have a dysfunctional HRA board. They don't work together. When HLDC, and I know this as a member of HLDC and as the chair of HLDC, when they had the contract with HRA, everything, everything the director tried to do and exercise the authority in the contract was undercut by the HRA board. It doesn't work that way and it's a recipe for disaster. If the HRA board is going to function that way, it doesn't matter what contract you have or with who, you're going to have those problems all the time. And so when you look at the letter from from the chair of the HRA, the concern she raised was the inability of the HRA board to be effective, the inability of the board to manage HRA properties effectively. And we've seen some of that when you're in your tour and we've seen some of that in other documentation. The inability of the board to address improper conduct of members and staff, we've just dealt with that. The HRA board members have actively opposed the vision and direction set forth by the county board in several instances, one being the housing trust fund and one being the other being the new apartment complex and trying to get those projects done. Board members are interfering with HRA management, they're micromanaging, they're not letting whoever has the management contract do their job. The HRA board is ignoring recommendations from their executive director in regards to managing personnel and property. It doesn't work and it could be, it could be anybody that you go into a management contract. If that board is going to function that way, it's going to fail. Then there's business and statute concerns, accuracy of the minutes, financial concerns with upkeep, accounts receivable, payroll and cash flow. At one point, our accounts receivable, I think you mentioned was over sixty thousand dollars?
It is currently, it was almost a zero and it's over sixty thousand.
That's that's uncalled for. That's that's just somebody's not doing their job on staying on top of that. You guys saw the condition of the facilities and the outdoor space, that's just one property. You know, some of the other ones are same situation. There's concerns with bids and RFP compliance by state statute that Jeff brought up. Board member recording meetings without board approval and then not providing the copy of the recording for public record, that's a concern. Improper calling of special meetings without notifying all board members, that's an issue. So when I look at all these things that I saw from the chair's letter and the what I know as being the HLDC chair and having to work with the contract, the HRA board's inability to address the issue puts the county at risk. Our own county board representative to the HRA for some time now has been concerned about the dysfunction of the HRA board. So I look at it, the county board must exercise its oversight by taking back HRA authority through cancellation of existing appointments to the entire HRA board. And to continue with the existing HRA board would be irresponsible and subject the county to potential liability. And I'm not willing to do that anymore because this has been going on for too long. It needs to be fixed and the root of the problem is a dysfunctional HRA board. And I don't know what you're going to do to solve that except what I mentioned. County board has to take take authority back. At some point, we can revisit it again and look at, you know, reinstituting a board. But in the meantime, I don't think that one's going to be able to solve the problems.
Yeah, I I read the same letter from the chair and from what I gather out of it, it's it's not the full board that's dysfunctional, it's primarily the one one person.
But it's making the full board dysfunctional.
It's 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 one person, one person, I believe, two and there's four very good quality people for the remainder of the board. To abandon the entire board just for one, this doesn't make sense to me. In fact, I think that would open up possibilities of more liability because that's like dismissing the one, the easy way and that is abolishing the entire board without giving any process. And then especially if you go and reestablish the board and maybe even appoint some of those same people back to it again, then that would be a very good case of no due process to the one that you want to really dismiss. Through the what statute says, that person has, you give them notice, they have ten days, they would peer before the board to hear the charges and that that person would have a chance to defend themselves. This way, you're totally doing away with that due process. Because if we end up reappointing some of these same people back again, that's that's a big case for lack of due process to me and that opens the door to liability.
And I would agree with you, you know, that most of it stems from likely one one member, but it's gotten so tumultuous now that the board can't function as a whole anymore because of that. You're to the point where I've literally had a couple of board members tell me that they're not going to hang in there much longer and they'll they'll resign.
Oh, it's because of one person.
So what do you do at that point?
It's because of one person.
Now you're not solving the problem, you know, you you mentioned you you have some good board members that are saying, I'm done.
So I would.
So what do you do?
I would like to give two examples. At the last board meeting, we had there were two HRA board members who disagreed with the HR attorney and our county attorney in firing up the employees that were doing illegal actions. And those two board members instead thought that they should have just been given disciplinary action. And then secondly, at that HRA meeting, two people were assigned to contact the HLDC, HRDC, excuse me. And then one person was asked to contact the HRA board in Bemidji to see how the HRDC board functioned. So the person that was assigned to contact the HRA board did that, but then also instead of letting the two people the HRA board had chosen and agreed upon to contact HRDC, went ahead and contacted HRDC and gave her gave their tur of our property instead of waiting for the people that the HRA board had designated to do that. The same person went to the planning commission last night, the city planning commission meeting, and said that they were representing the HRA board and they got a condition put on the gravel to the road of the new development that will be calcium chloride, but the board never authorized this person to go to the meeting and represent the HRA board. Those are just two examples. I could give many of of what's happened over the last few months. The board is non-functional, it 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 just is non-functional. The meetings are two hours and they don't accomplish anything because the riff is so deep and the blame game, especially by one person, is so vocal.
And even if you even if you were to remove the one that you believe is, you know, the major source of the problem, the riff has extended beyond that one person now. So there's no easy fix to this.
When I.
So I come to the conclusion that county board needs to exercise its authority and take control. Otherwise, we are subject subjecting ourselves to potential liability by not taking action.
And we have over seven million dollars worth of assets.
When I talk to my peers, they all look at me funny because we have an HRA board and an economic development authority and we're paying both. Most people have them combined to save efficiencies in in operation. You can maximize the use of staff if you combine those resources and if you combine those resources, we don't have, we don't have the fighting between the things right now. Right now, we've got a turf war between an HLDC and an HRA board and that's not going to help anybody. And if this housing project doesn't happen because of that, that's going to be a real shame.
So then do part do, how would that work for HRA representation on the HLDC board?
There's there's several paths outlined in statute on how those could be combined or how there could be a joint powers or how there could be, there's there's lots of different ways to do that. They both require a process. But it it doesn't.
So it's not like if if we if we terminated the board, the HRA board, it's not like the HRA board would not have representation? Not that, I'm not saying the current board, I'm just saying there would be representation on behalf of the HRA by combining those.
Yes.
And in the interim, this county board is the HRA board.
Right.
I think that puts liability on us.
We already have liability because we have seven million dollars of county dollars tied up in these projects. And ultimately, that falls on us because we're county commissioners.
Ultimately, we have the oversight and if we know, if we know what we know right now and we do nothing, we have the liability.
I'm in favor of doing something, but it's not eliminating the whole board. It's it's taking care of that one person who's in the problem.
Well, that and then I think we ought to table this until we have an opportunity to hear directly from the county attorney because he would, he was direct, he was adamantly opposed to that idea because of the liability and suggested the alternative route as an easier, as a as a cleaner, easier path forward with less liability to the county.
Well, if the HLDC has terminated their contract and then we turn around and give them the HRA, that just doesn't seem right. And I also question if we take over, what are we going to do? We're going to hire somebody to do the work. So that's where I look at where the HRA board has been in contact with the HRDC and things are already in motion and we are not in motion with any, I mean, the HRDC is already further along than this board is if we were going to take over.
The challenge is the RFP doesn't close until Friday and the HRA is negotiating with the HRDC and I don't know that, I'm not entirely sure that's compliant.
Also though, is there anybody else that replied to the RFP?
The RFP doesn't close till Friday, so we don't know.
It's not the contract that's the problem. It's it's the inability of the board to allow the contractor, the contractee to do their job. That's the problem. Doesn't matter who you contract with. If if the board doesn't allow them to do their job, it's not going to work. So what is the real problem?
Well, when I when I when I looked at the meadows just last week, a lot of these things that were, I thought, you know, like no grass being mowed, it didn't even look like there was any grass sowed in the beginning.
There actually was, there was sod put down, but it was too expensive to water.
It's it's in bad shape.
Yeah, it is. It looks terrible. I agree.
And that's all, it's all, it's all done during the current leadership of of the of who the contracted director.
And I'm what I'm trying to convey to you is is the contracted director tried to address all of these things, the board would not allow it to happen. That's that's where the contract's not the problem. The problem is the micromanaging of the contract and not allowing them to address the problems.
From what I read from the chair's letter, it's from the problems of the issues of the one.
Well, it kind of spells it right out in there that that's part of was the problem.
Yeah, the one person.
Well, right, but now now if that is spilled over and created other members that can't work together, I don't know how you quickly remedy that. If that would have been maybe addressed six months ago, I would be a hundred percent in your court.
The the problem I have, Tom, with what you're suggesting is as long as I've been on the board, there's been two county attorneys and the commissioner board has never gone against what the county attorney suggested. We've always, we've always respected that their advice as far as liability to the county is what we should go with and so therefore, that's why I'm having trouble supporting what you're suggesting. Because otherwise, if Jonathan would have said, go for it, I would say, go for it.
Also, I guess I have issue with no input from the HRA board.
Do they even know that we have considering abolishing the entire board? Does Kathy Henry know that? I doubt it.
It's a suggestion, looking at solving the problem.
I I I there's four good quality people on that board. I cannot see terminating them just for problems of one.
So Ted, would you would you like all the board members to come and share with the county board?
I would just recommend that we schedule something for next week and have the county attorney provide a summary. It would be a lot easier. We'll also know if they're if we'll also know by that point whether or not the HRA board has actually solved their July first problem because their meeting is next Monday, correct?
The HRA?
Yeah.
They, I don't believe are meeting on Monday, but I'm not sure.
Oh, that's right, they can't meet on Monday because it's holiday.
Just because the board doesn't vote unanimously on everything doesn't mean they're dysfunctional.
This has nothing to do with board votes. I I have sat.
Read the board chair's letter again.
Yeah, yeah.
I have sat through multiple meetings where there is a lot of verbal abuse to the board members and to the contracted employees.
I'm sure we have a relevant contribution here. Go ahead, Scott.
Scott Wilson, representing myself as a concerned citizen. My other hats are the Park Rapids HRA and Cass County HRA. I'm here listening, trying to get perspective. We offered to assist, number one, the biggest thing for us is the concern of losing the Hubbard County HRA. We use it as a viable tool. We run section eight program in Hubbard County, they're all Cass County vouchers, but we do have an agreement with the Hubbard County HRA to provide those within Hubbard County. We also have a contract with Park Rapids HRA to provide section eight within the city of Park Rapids. The issue that we have is that we offered assistance to try to meet the July first deadline to make sure that nothing fails. And from my understanding at a meeting, one of your board members mentioned that we didn't provide financial information with the city administrator, which we did and never had a request for any of that information. So we have that clarified. But the issue that we have is that you're talking about something that's a big impact and I think you need to realize what it is that you're doing. And I think you have a conflict between HLDC with board members on both programs and nobody takes their hat off on the other program. So they're using one entity to do their program. That's what I see from the outside looking in, but I'm just a perspective. But our goal here is that you figure out what you're going to do with the HRA, but it's a huge asset to your community and it's a viable entity for your for the Hubbard County in the future. The HRA is the only entity that can do jail bonds if you're doing any referendums and they're outside your level of limits, so that's just a perspective.
The and just just to speak to one question that I heard underneath Scott's comments is nobody's talking about doing away with the HRA authority, they're talking about.
But if you do an EDA with HRA, the authority doesn't have that power.
If you do an HRA with EDA authority, it does.
If you do an EDA with HRA authority, you don't.
If you do an. That's correct. We would not. Yeah, we would not be proposing eliminating the H R A authority at Hubbard County.
I just wanted to clarify that we did offer assistance, um, to, uh, provide, because we don't wanna see anything happen to the H R A, we don't wanna see it fail. It was almost set up to fail by cutting the contract and not allowing the H R A board to pursue other avenues which they have the right to enter in the contracts.
So, Scott, I have a question and so you would be, the R F P is out there and so...
We're, we're not interested in operating from Cass, so right now we have a contract with Park Rapids. We're here just to say, hey, we're here, my board is on board with us to try to assist in any way, shape or form, both Park Rapids H R A and the Cass County H R A, to make sure that we can keep it going. And I did have a discussion with David, um, and the biggest thing is, I think, is to make sure that you can all work together when this is over. My perspective and we have a difference of opinion, but I think if there's, the hats came off from one program to the other, I think you'd see a better transition. And I think this all came to light within the last six, four months, five months where the termination came in. After that meeting, his work basically hit the road. So that's just my perspective.
Ultimately, the-
I'm not finding any of your-
Ultimately, I believe the best solution is one, one board and E D A acting as H R A too, but how do we get there from here? I don't, I don't know, you know? That's up to us. And I'm not opposed to what you're, you're saying, Tom, and just addressing the one. I'm not opposed to that, but I definitely want to, you know, have the county attorney weigh in and give us, you know, his advice on what, what the best solution may be. But something has to happen. It can't keep, we can't keep, it can't keep going like it's going. It's not good for anybody.
I will try to work with Jonathan and come up with options.
Done with that one? Okay, um, well then, we're ready for our tour.
Do you, do you have an update?
That you would like to share before we disband to go on the tour or do you just plan on doing the-
I have a couple of words, your secretary called and they asked me to speak and I said, "Speak about what?"
I, I think providing the context in the meeting with, uh, with the recording going is good for people to know and then they'll know that we're recessing to the tour. So you come, if you would, by the-
Oh, you have a microphone and everything. Good morning, I'm Tammy Hensel, I'm the Director for the Hubbard County Historical Museum. Nancy is on our board, she is with this morning as well. I'm gonna start by telling you what we've done at the museum in the past couple of years. As you all know, we've retrofitted the existing, um, fluorescent lights, the ballasts were failing, so the L E D completion project is finished, it's been signed off on. We were coming out of COVID when I took over as Director three years ago, attendance was down, people were staying in. The attendance has come back up at the museum. Last year, we turned our, what was my office and our gift shop into a tea room and gift shop. We've been offering afternoon teas, which have been very popular. We've gotten a lot of members who have come to tea and joined as members of the Historical Society because they've come to tea. This year, we've got some exciting things coming up. This coming Saturday, we're gonna have our own little antiques road show on the lawn of the museum. In July, we're having a quilt show and in September, we're having a hot dish luncheon using recipes from the museum. And we're having a local author who wrote a series of hot dish murder mysteries come and be our speaker and she's gonna give out a set of her books. So it's fun, plan on coming for lunch in September because it'll be a hoot. As Director, one of the challenges I faced is, yes, attendance was going back up at the museum, but it was not going back up with the speakers that I had arranged for at the ends of the months. People just didn't seem to like going in the social services door down that dark hallway that smells, quite frankly, into that dark room. And we just couldn't, it was embarrassing to me as a Director to ask somebody to come and speak and have five people show up to listen. So I told the board last fall, we need to do something different this year. So we're having more events, they're costing us a little more money, but it's getting good exposure for the museum. I don't see any of them making us a lot of money, but hopefully it'll make up for it in membership. So, did I hit everything? Let's see, tea room, attendance. My job is basically museum maintenance, cleaning, controlling the humidity as much as I can, facilitating guests, answering inquiries for information, keeping track of memberships, putting out newsletters and arranging for events and speakers to make people more aware of the museum. And I think that people are more aware of the museum than they were a few years ago. I've been surprised at how many people didn't even know we had a museum in Hubbard County. So it's been gratifying to have more people come. Last year, we had close to fourteen hundred people come through the museum, which is kinda surprising when you look at how quiet it always is over there. Also, Jeff, I wanna thank you for sending out that memo. It's been wonderful having the people who work at the courthouse not park in front of the museum and I am guilty today of parking in front of the museum. I looked, I had cookies for afterwards and I had things to unload and there was not a single space in the sheriff's lot. So as soon as the tour is over, I'm gonna go move my car.
True confessions, here we are.
But we, we spent money last year on a beautiful sign, but all these big trucks parked in front of it and nobody could see it. So it, it's only right that the museum should have a few spots that are reserved for people who wanna come and visit, so thank you, Jeff. And that's all I'd like to say, does anybody have any questions about the museum? Well, you know, as long as I've got you here, on my bucket list, I would love to see a furnace reinstalled in there. I mean, you're going to all that money to put the roof on, just, just putting it out there into the universe because I'd like to work all year round. And it's bad for artifacts, quite frankly, to be cold in the winter and be warm in the summer, so, you know, if in the future some windfall were to come, it sure would be nice to have a furnace back in our museum, then we could be open all year round. You know, I think that there's a misconception that most of the people that come to the museum are visitors. My experience is that most of the people who come to the museum are residents, they might bring visitors with them, but we have a lot of residents that come visit the museum. And the specialist thing about our museum is that every single thing in there has been used and donated by people from Hubbard County and everything has a story. And a lot of people wanna revisit those stories, so, yeah, just consider it. Thank you.
I gotta make a quick phone call before I-
So we would have a motion to recess to the tour, uh, with adjournment directly after that.
Okay. Got a motion?
I'll second.
All right.